Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight is a regular meeting of the South Kingstown Planning Board. The date is Tuesday, July 26, 2022. The time is now four minutes past seven. The first item on our agenda is roll call. Susan Axelrod.
Here.
Joe Murphy.
Here.
Paul Jordan.
Here.
Robin Pathie is absent. Peter DiStefano.
Here.
Elizabeth Karp.
Here.
And Maria Mack is here. Our next agenda item is the consent agenda. I have a request from Jamie Rabbit, Director of Planning, to remove item G, which is Report of the Administrative Officer, to be taken up in the order that it is printed on the agenda. I also have a request from the Director of Planning to add an item for discussion, Cyrus Court Laurel Lane Estates, relative to the release of landscape surety. If someone would like to make a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda, which consists of approval of minutes June 14, 2022 work session, June 14, 2022 special session, and June 28, 2022 regular session.
So moved.
We have a motion from Joe. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Paul. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. With the board's approval, Jamie has asked that we add this item to our agenda, Cyrus Court Laurel Lane Estates. Jamie, do you have a preference as to where that will be discussed in our agenda?
Madam Chair, under the item F, Reports and Special Items.
Very good. Would someone like to make a motion to add this item to our agenda? We have a motion from Peter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next agenda item is a public hearing, continued from June 28, 2022. Major subdivision, no street creation, combined conceptual master and preliminary plan, Hemmerly subdivision. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Good evening. Christopher Zangary for the applicant.
Good evening.
And just administratively, I've got two unclaimed notices that just got returned. As you recall, last time we were here, at the last regularly scheduled meeting, there were some concerns by members of the board and also the abutting neighbors regarding the location of the structure and certain other issues. And we've addressed those with a revised site plan that I believe you have in front of you. And I don't know if you're able to put it on the monitor. No? Okay.
Sorry, I'm having technical difficulties at the moment. I'm trying to resolve it via text.
Understood. What we'll do is, we have a old-fashioned hard copy right here, so we'll put that up. Hopefully you'll be able to see it. And Anthony Nena is here. He was the engineer on the project. And so what the applicant has asked him to do, as well as with the surveyor, is to cite the structure farther back from the cliff. That was a big concern for the neighbors. So what we did was, we moved it back about 50 or 60 feet off the cliff, and it's more in the flat portion of the lot. So it is farther back from ministerial road, approximately 350 feet. There's also added a vegetative buffer on the side, so that the neighbors won't be impacted visually. And also, we moved the drainage detention pond. That was an issue as well. That was somewhat in the 50-foot vegetative buffer along the frontage. That's been moved back, so that's no longer an issue. So that's the new site plan. We also have some information on the seeding. There was different questions about what kind of seed would be used along the driveway. So we'll be able to answer those questions as well. So if you've all had a chance to review the new site plan, and if you have any questions, we will certainly answer them.
Thank you. And to add to your narrative, you have also changed the site plan to reflect relocation of the infiltration basin that was adjacent to the buffer.
That's correct.
Thank you. Questions, comments from board members? Joe?
The driveway, what's the proposed material for the driveway? Is that gravel, asphalt, or what is the...
Anthony, you want to address that? It's gravel.
Could you just state your name for the record, please?
Yes, Anthony Nena. I have offices at 85, sorry, 3 Crestwood Drive in Westerly. The first, the first few hundred feet is gravel, and then the shaded portion that's on the site plan is paved because of the slope. And then as you get past that steep slope, it goes back to gravel.
I'm just going to kind of look towards Rich here and have a little discussion. But my concern is the slopes that we have and the possibility for high velocity, such that it causes erosion and sedimentation, and the infiltration basin becomes full or ineffective. Can you talk about that, Rich, and what you've looked at, and will you comment on that?
Well, what I talked about early on when this came in was, you know, I wanted to see the steeper portions of the driveway to be paved. In order to protect it from what you're talking about, the driveway is crowned, and the water will sheet to the sides. And on either side, I requested at the time swales to extend all the way to the base of the hill, and there to include check dams for velocity and also to impound a little bit of water as it moves down the line.
Did the, as part of that, did the applicant provide engineering calculations to velocity and make sure the velocity stayed below rate such that sedimentation would not occur in the swales?
You know, I don't believe we looked at the velocity. It may have been included in the narrative.
I did include it in the drainage calculations that I provided to the town. The velocities were, the check dams and the velocities were slow enough where it would not erode, excessively erode the swales.
I guess, Rich, that's maybe one thing, if you could just take a look at what the application is, and make sure that the, you know, contain engineering calculations showing that the velocities would not result in erosion. I assume those will be grass swales, there'll be grass in those, or whatever, whatever's there. And then, I don't know if we are counting on vegetation, if we can maybe include a post-construction inspection to ensure that those swales and vegetation are fully developed before final acceptance of the project. Again, my concern is, if those infiltration basins receive sedimentation, it's not necessarily going to affect the neighbors, but it is going to affect everyone who uses ministerial road, because that's where that water's going to go. Well, I guess it's lower than that, so, yeah, it's lower than that. But I still would be concerned about the sedimentation and ineffective of the infiltration basin.
Can I address that? So in Appendix 2 of the report, it has the drainage computations that show the velocities and the steep slopes for the runoff that's receiving is about three feet per second, which is permissible in that type of, for grass dries. I didn't hear you.
I'm sure, Rich.
Okay, sure.
I'll confirm that we're not scouring velocities, and then if it needs to be, you know, riprap, maybe in some sections to change the velocity, we'll do that. From my experience, though, the check dams usually work well. But I think you're right. I think it's a revisit at some point, just to see, especially after maybe a larger rain, to see what's happening. And, you know, I can look to do that. Maybe that can be part of the approval, perhaps. But, you know, because the numbers are always the numbers, but we really don't know sometimes. That's right. That's right, so.
Other questions, comments from board members? Rich, do you have any other comments relative to this application?
I do not.
Anything from staff?
Madam Chair, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director, just with regards to the staff report, we have one additional recommendation, and that is associated with the language for item number six, which I will read. Prior to any land disturbance, i.e. tree clearing, grading, and/or excavation, the southerly property line, as well as the limits of disturbance, shall be staked in the field every 25 feet where the limits of disturbance are within 25 feet of the southerly property line. In order to clearly delineate the distances between the proposed driveway slash limits of disturbance, we're recommending the following language be included: "and detention basin infrastructure," and then back to the language "and said property line." So just clear that it's the driveway, the grading associated with the driveway, and the detention basin that needs to be pre-staked and limits of disturbance associated there. With regards to the conversation, it may be possible to add a "after" condition number six. Condition number seven, that the applicant shall add a maintenance plan for the proposed detention basin to the plans.
It may not just be the detention basin, but they also include the check dams along the swell.
Right, the check dams and the effectiveness of the, both the check dams and the swell.
I'll just, I'll add the language "and associated drainage infrastructure."
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Please come up to the mic and state your name for the record.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Donna Wallace, and we live on the northerly side of the Hemmerly property, and we are the abutting neighbor. One of the concerns that we had had the last time we were here, and I did speak, was the location of the house. Not so much for our sight line, because regardless of where the house is, we will have sight of it, so, and we understand that, and we are fine with it. The question that I have is based on a conversation. We really appreciate everything that the Hemmerlys and their team has done to make the adjustments, to protect the slopes and the natural environment that is there, and to build within that. My question comes up with the fact that I was told, once this is closed, the house can be moved anywhere they feel they would like to have it. They could technically move it back, they could move it anywhere, and once it's closed. I'm not sure how much of the vegetation is protected, how we can protect that. Is there something that could go in? I'm just asking that question now. I just found that out today, that even though we are approving it based on this information, once it is approved, it does not need to follow any of those regulations.
I think you're essentially correct. We do have authority with regard to the buffer, and that has been discussed. I think that they have made some adjustments so that the buffer will not be impacted by the infiltration basin. We do not have authority as far as the location of their building or the size of their building. Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong.
Madam Chair, with regards to your statements, you are correct. So if you look at the site plan that's on the screen, you'll see a front yard setback and side yard setback. Under single-family subdivision development, your control as a planning board is associated with all construction outside of that. So your regulations control the building of structures inside of a setback, but so long as they're constructing outside of the setback, your zoning regulations and your planning regulations do not have ridgeline protection? Do they not require single-family houses to landscape from another single-family house? So again, your regulatory authority is limited. So the statements that the lady made this evening with regards to this site plan, this site plan is intended to show the hypothetical development of the property as it relates to driveway location, house location, septic, and water.
So I guess my question is then, because it is the responsibility of the planning board to also consider, like, the comprehensive community plan and things, so it's more about the vegetation and the natural states of things. When you look at the comprehensive community planning zoning ordinances, one of them states that South Kingstown rural areas must be protected and enhanced, and one of the things that they talk about is design guidelines. So it's not so much the placement of the home, it's about protecting the bank that's there and things like that. So it's more the vegetation that exists. And the other thing that, when I also look at the authority and intent for minor subdivision guidelines, one of the things is to guide the land development with an emphasis on citing subdivisions improvement so as to allow for the maximum preservation of existing natural features. So I feel that that is something that we should take into consideration somehow, be it not so much discussion of the placement of the home, but discussion of preservation of the area on the ministerial road, especially with that, so. I feel like you have a lot of, I feel like you have a lot of responsibility to protect what's out there for the natural areas and vegetation.
Thank you for your comments, and you will note that at our previous meeting, we did bring up all of those issues. However, in terms of regulatory authority, we are limited to the scenic roadway buffer in this instance. We can make suggestions, but we cannot require specifics as far as vegetation in certainly a two-lot subdivision.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Hearing none. Would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Peter. Do we have a second? Second from Susan. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have a draft motion that begins on page six. Jamie has suggested language to conditions of approval number six, relative to the addition of specifics of the infiltration basin. Also, with regard to Joe's comments about a maintenance plan for the proposed detention basin, check dams, swales, and effectiveness and evaluation thereof. Are there any other changes? Joe, are you happy with that language?
Yeah, I saw that as a separate item number nine, if that's okay.
Certainly.
Madam Chair, under item nine, soil erosion, runoff, and sediment control permit, the engineering department could deal with post-evaluation in that permitting process.
You mean eight?
Under, both eight and nine. Again, they need a physical alteration permit for the driveway, and then they need a separate soil and erosion control permit for the construction of the driveway. So there's two permits.
Could be added either to the...
That come out of the engineering office.
Or have a separate. Just reread that language, Jamie, so we're clear. I want to be aware of that.
I'll reread six and the new addition of seven. Item number six, prior to any land disturbance, i.e. tree clearing, grading, and/or excavation, the southerly property line, as well as the limits of disturbance, shall be staked in the field every 25 feet where the limits of disturbance is within 25 feet of the southerly property line. In order to clearly delineate the distances between the proposed driveway slash limits of disturbance and the detention basin infrastructure and said property line. Item number seven, the applicant shall add a maintenance plan slash language to the site plan for the proposed detention basin and associated drainage infrastructure necessary for the development of the house lot. And then nine would be the physical alter, sorry, eight would be the physical alteration permit language, nine would be the soil erosion runoff and sedimentation control permit.
Joe, do you feel that that captures your concerns?
Yes.
Anything else from board members?
Could I ask one thing?
Yes.
Regarding the monument placement and the timing of the monuments that was in the draft decision and finding of fact, could the placement of the monuments be contingent upon the issuance of the CO or the building permit for timing purposes?
Well, it says that they need to be installed prior to recording, so wouldn't you need your CO?
Madam Chair, if I can just elaborate a little bit on that. So the subdivision would need to be recorded and approved before you can pull a building permit for the development of the structure.
Yes.
So at the time of recording, the monumentation would need to have been installed, and the MYLAR would need to state that they were installed in the field.
So basically, it becomes a condition of the recording of the subdivision to have the monuments in place, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Yep, understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
There was, may I add one thing?
Certainly.
I thought we had talked initially about that structure that's up high, and then there's a structure down low and drainage that may come down following the construction. And I just want to, I wouldn't mind seeing something that allows for a right to drain, so to speak, for the new parcel to be allowed to drain to that lower parcel.
Madam Chair, there is language on the plans associated with rights to drain to the north.
Okay.
Yes, I believe I recall reading that. But if you, Rich, do you feel that that needs to be included in the motion?
So during the application process, as part of this, the applicant did submit proposed language associated with the rights to drain on that northerly property line. So that is in your packet, and it becomes part of the language necessary if this motion succeeds.
So no need to add it to either the findings or the conditions, then?
Correct.
Thanks, Rich. If there are no other modifications, would someone like to make this motion as amended?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Joe. Do we, go ahead.
Yeah, South Kingstown Planning Board, hereby grants combined conceptual master and preliminary plan approval for the Hemmerly major subdivision, a two-lot major subdivision for single-family development located at 350 Ministerial Road, Lee G. Hemmerly Trust, applicant owner. The approval is based upon plan entitled, proposed two-lot major subdivision, prepared for the Lee G. Hemmerly Trust, 350 Ministerial Road, Excesses Platte 74, Parcel 7, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, Sheets 1 through 8 dated April 26, 2022, with revisions through July 13, 2022, prepared by Alfred DiOrio, RLS, Inc. This approval is based on the following findings of fact and conditions of approval. Findings of fact A through L, conditions of approval 1 through 9, with item 6, 7, 8, and 9 revised as discussed this evening.
We have a motion from Joe. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Peter. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next agenda item is a public hearing, major multi-household land development preliminary plan, Magnolia Lane. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Matthew Landry, on behalf of the applicant-owner, Jay Thomas Investments, and its member, John DiAgostino. We came before the board last month and had concluded our full presentation. As you know, Mr. DiAgostino had testified as well. And this board had asked to, or continued this meeting to this month to allow my client and one of the abutters, the Lemas, to engage in a discussion about some issues that were raised. And I'll just indicate what those issues were. To our understanding, they involved some tree-related removal or damage to the Lima's property, a silt fence, a retaining wall, issues with the grading around a fire hydrant, and the Lima's general discontent with the project. You know, Mr. DiAgostino had testified at length about his efforts to try to resolve this issue as amicably as possible, but I understand the board wanted to continue this the extra month, so that way we could try to work out some of those issues. Now, over the last month, my client has spoken to both Mr. Lima and town staff, including Mr. Borbenes, in an effort to set up a site visit or a meeting to go over the silt fence issue, the retaining wall issue, and some of the other issues that were raised during the last meeting. Now, that meeting has not taken place yet, I understand. It was really Mr. DiAgostino in ours, positioned to have representatives from all sides present at that meeting, which is important for obvious reasons. So the Lemas were looped into that when my client spoke to them, and my client's understanding is that the Lemas were happy with that progression and the discussions with staff. I know they're here, I don't want to speak for them, but that at least was our understanding of that discussion. The, my client did reach out to the Fire Marshal, who indicated he can be available as early as next week for a site visit. I know Mr. Borbenes was on a much-deserved vacation and has just returned, but the idea is that they have spoken, and they're trying to arrange that onsite meeting to address those issues. As my client indicated last month, and continues to agree, is that issues, those planning-related issues, the silt fence, retaining wall, those issues that arose, certainly will be subject to Mr. Borbenes' review and the outcome of that site visit, which I think is important. And any issues that need to be resolved will be resolved. If the silt fence needs to be moved, or the retaining wall needs to be addressed, things of that nature will certainly be addressed during and at that meeting. But unfortunately, that meeting has just not happened prior to this meeting for a couple of different reasons. At this juncture, my client obviously has had discussions with the Lemas and town, and has made an effort to address those things, and will continue to do so. And anything outside of those planning issues, again, respectfully, is really out of the scope of the planning board's purview. I know there's some alleged tree damage, property damage. Those are really civil matters, not appropriate for this forum. Now, my client is certainly willing to discuss those things and continue that dialogue, but to the extent they're going to be pressed, you know, here, it's really appropriate for another forum. The Lemas have every opportunity and right to engage that forum as need be, but with respect to the planning issues, those will certainly be addressed in accordance with any approvals or conditions here this evening. One thing of note, too, I'll say that there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting about, you know, two sides to every story, you know, people present a lot of different facts and trying to get to the bottom of these things, but I think it's important to evaluate the other side of the... the other side of the coin here and the other members of this community that are affected by delays. There are road conditions that need to be completed and this project is dependent on everything being finalized and final approval being passed. And there are members of the Magnolia Lane community that are here this evening and have submitted letters in support and have concerns with continued delays in approving this project because it does impact their community. You know, it's construction delays, it's noise, it's disturbance, and while they're very much happy with everything that has gone on up to this point, they'd like to move it along, and I think it's in the best interest of neighbors in that community. They are here this evening, at least some of them, and I believe most of them would like to speak, and I'll let them speak for themselves, but I just wanted to indicate that there is some concern amongst members of the community of additional delays to the project. And respectfully, we concluded our testimony last month and we rest on that testimony. Mr. DiAgostino is here and willing to, you know, answer any questions or engage in that dialogue, but I'll leave it to the board to ask any additional questions and certainly the Lemus, I'm sure, will want to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Landry, and we certainly appreciate your efforts, and the idea of the DPS review and a site visit is a very good one, but we completely understand.
Thank you.
Questions, comments from board members? We do have language that has been clarified from Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director, relative to the site plan specifics of the screening fence, and that has been distributed to everyone. It is number 10 on the draft motion. That said, any questions or comments from board members?
I think we're still in the public hearing.
Excuse me?
We're still in the public hearing, right?
Yes. So if there are no questions or comments from board members, this is a public hearing. Since we are at the preliminary stage of review, it would be appropriate for new information to be submitted at this point in time. We have had several meetings with regard to this project. It is at essentially the final stage of review, even though it's called preliminary. So any new information for folks who wish to speak, please come up to the mic and state
Good evening, everybody. My name is Walter Majowski, and I currently live at 24 Magnolia Lane. I previously lived just up the road on Austin Street. We made the big mile and a half move because this new property offered me the layout that was just better for our needs, a one-bedroom, two-bedrooms on the top when my daughter, granddaughter, and son-in-law come. So that was our reason for moving from one area of South Kingston to another. I just want to state that our first letter of support, we sent something in in January, and we also called into a meeting in March, on March 22. And I just briefly want to state kind of my feelings and the way I felt about the way some of these meetings were being led up until this point. I feel there's some-
Again, could you just be sure to make your comments relative to the project as a whole, not necessarily the functionality of-
Sure, sure. As a whole, the project, I felt that because Mr. DiAgostino was building our house at the time when we were supporting his project, that our support was somewhat discounted. I also felt that there was a little bit of a dislike for the fact that this first phase went through. Comments were made about my house in particular, that it was so close, and this was made by, I believe, a board member, that it was so close to the retention pond that you could spit in it. And there were also comments regarding the size of the lots and how anybody would want to live.
Again, just to clarify, we are here to discuss-
Okay.
-this particular project, not, and we-
Okay.
-understand that you have moved in and you're very happy.
Okay. So leading up to that, we had listened to the other meetings after that point, hoping that the facts would be listened to and this would move forward so that we could move forward with, as was mentioned, the new road and getting the road done and just moving on with this project. However, after last month's continuance, I felt the need, and it was somewhat discussed, that I need to be here again to support this project and state the reasons why, which is every month that this goes by, the street cannot be completed. I mean, I want this street to be a legal street. It's bad enough we're having issues with deliveries and whatnot. And I would just like to touch upon two issues that were raised last month, and we talked about a little bit, and I have some pictures. And it goes in line with that, you know, there are two sides to the stories, and the way it can be presented can really impact the feeling that the board may have on Mr. DiAgostino's response to certain things. And one of those issues was the fire hydrant. And I'd like to, if I could, just send, give some pictures real quick of what I have. And this is, this is kind of the reason, I just felt that some of this is being one-sided, and I haven't been here to really represent. What I feel is kind of going on, and I can understand what it must be like to have a new development go in your backyard. But, you know, when I heard the comments last week, and this was what delayed it yet another month, I could wait till everybody has the pictures, but what I have is a picture that Mrs. Lima submitted of the fire hydrant.
Madam Chair, if I just may for a moment? The fire hydrant that's being discussed is outside the purview of this planning board. It is part of a previously approved subdivision and the infrastructures associated with Magnolia Lane and does not affect this development, nor is it within your-
Thank you, Jamie.
-approval authority.
And we do have these photos, and we appreciate your-
Thank you, but they were, excuse me, but they were brought up as a reason for this not to go forward, and that's exactly my point.
Again, we're at the final stage of review. We have a draft motion before us.
Okay.
We're here to hear any public comments on any new information that we have not yet heard.
Well, what I have is new information that what was presented to go against Mrs. DiAgostino and the lack of attention that was given was a picture that was-
Again, you're commenting on an abutters' comments, and it really isn't germane to what we're looking at. We're looking at-
I'm sorry, it seemed like it was last month, at last month's meeting.
Exactly, and we have, again, we are at the final stage. We have additional language that staff has provided that is necessary for this draft motion.
Okay.
So again, unless you have something new specifically germane to this plan, we, again, thank you for your comments, and we understand.
Well, what I would, I would like to finish then with my support. As I mentioned earlier, the fact that I'm here to support and for this project to move forward, because I'm living next to a construction zone, and I also, you know, I think it was a little discounted because Mr. DiAgostino built our house, and people feel maybe I'm just here to support him from here. However, I don't know if anybody's ever built their own house, and all I want to say is that we did this during a pandemic in supply chain issues, and we worked, there was a lot of stress, we worked through it with John and his wife, and I just want to say that they did a wonderful job. And in the end, I'm happy what I had, and I have every confident, confidence that Mr. DiAgostino will put the same effort and pride that he put into my house and the other houses that he built into this project. And that's, if that's all I can talk about, then that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Yes, my name Claudia Majowski, 24 Magnolia Lane. I just want to ask a question then. Are you saying, Madam Chair, that the information that was provided last month by the Lemus and was allowed to be spoken about is now not allowed to be spoken about now that we're in present here?
I'm not making any representation for what occurred at the last month's meeting. We are trying to move forward.
Yep.
We are asking for any new information since last month, and we would like to move forward with this.
So is new information not considered to be things that we have that are a difference from what was reported earlier? Or are you basically saying you've agreed that's not purview for the, please, let me speak. Are you saying that's not purview to the planning board, which your special legal counsel had already told you last month?
I'm really, I'm sorry. We need comments on this project-
Okay.
-not on our process or any opinions with regard to the municipal process. I think if you could, again, limit your comments to any technical aspects of this particular portion that we are looking at and trying to move forward-
Okay.
-that would be the most helpful.
I agree.
Madam Chair, if I could just clarify, because, again, as a member of the public, you may not be completely aware of the draft motion that's before the planning board.
Okay.
The planning board has a draft motion. It is written in a favorable manner. It contains, bear with me, 10 conditions.
Okay.
And those are all germane to the subject matter of allowing a developer to move forward with his project, but also putting the safeguards to ensure that what is shown on the site plan is constructed.
Mm-hmm.
Again, they're contemplating a favorable motion-
Mm-hmm.
-that would approve the project, and some of the items that were discussed last month, as counsel had mentioned, were outside of the purview of the planning board. So I understand your frustration and appreciate that. The fire hydrant perhaps is one of them, but that fire hydrant is the subject matter of Department of Public Service, not the planning board at this time, so.
I appreciate that because we spent an awful lot of time researching this and came to that same conclusion. And I should also speak that the letter we submitted was on our behalf, my husband and I, who just spoke, as well as Bill Rivard, Peter Simon, and Mike and Kristen Souza, who are the other residents. And so I'm not speaking on just my behalf, I'm speaking of frustration we've all had, okay? So as long as you're saying that whatever was spoken about and allowed to be spoken about last month, and we have rebuttals, are not necessary because basically you've agreed that they shouldn't have been part of the discussion last month, then I'm fine with that.
Again, I won't say they're not necessary, but the comments that you did provide staff were distributed electronically to all planning board members. They also have hard copies this evening, so we thank you for your information that you sent to us.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, I have no other questions or comments, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming on.
And I'm happy that this will be moving forward because, as we noted, we are pretty frustrated with the process. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Comments from board members? Anything additional? No?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Paul.
I think the concern about Magnolia Lane not being completed and accepted by the town, I don't think, I don't think the fault for that lies with the planning board. We have had repeated requests with the developer about the size and scale of the project and our concerns about it, and had he been willing to do something different, something smaller, something lesser with the property, we would have moved forward much sooner. So I think there's room all around the room to point fingers, but had we gotten something smaller, we would be past this point tonight.
Thank you, Paul, and could you just state your name for the record?
John DiAgostino, remember, I just want to follow up on that. We did make the building significantly smaller based on the board's comments right from the beginning. Everything that the board wanted, we, our team got together, we revised, and we did make those structures significantly smaller than what was proposed originally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Peter. Do we have a second?
Second.
From Susan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have a draft motion before us with some language submitted from Planning Director, which is on page five, and it is under conditions of approval, item number 10. The applicant shall add a detail to the site plan depicting the proposed six-foot-high opaque screening fence that is shown along the easterly property boundary on sheet six of nine and nine of nine. The site plans shall also be revised to clearly show the placement of this fence, the style of fence, and details associated with proper installation of the proposed fence. Any additional comments or thoughts relative to the draft motion that-
I have a question about required findings again. I know I always stumble over these.
Yes.
And maybe the Planning Director can help me with this, but number four, promoting design of land developments and subdivisions which are well-integrated with the surrounding neighborhood with regard to natural and built features. It's been my feeling all along that this is not well-integrated with the surrounding neighborhood, but I don't know, again, where those required findings fit versus findings of fact.
Thank you, Paul. I will defer to counsel on that because those findings are laid out in our regulations in Rhode Island law.
So there are required findings for all land development and subdivision applications, and those required findings are set forth in the Development Review Act. And additionally, the board is directed to address those general purposes of zoning, and that's what you've read, that's one of the general purposes of zoning. So if you agree with that, this is reflected in the board's decision.
So in voting to approve, I'm agreeing with all of those required findings being met?
Yes, the required findings are more or less set forth verbatim within the draft motion. Typically, boards don't elaborate on how specifically each application addresses those general purposes of zoning, but that's, those purposes of zoning are why you're here, and that's what you look at with every single application. So, you know, if a board member doesn't feel like it's, like the application is consistent with that general purpose, you can say something, you can put on the record something specific about that.
Thank you.
Paul, does that answer your question?
Yes and no.
Okay, right. I mean, we will note under, within the decision, under findings, there is item number C that is essentially reflected in many of the other findings with the required conditions of approval, which may be helpful. Other thoughts, comments from planning board members, additions to the motion, changes? Nothing? Joe? Nothing? Hearing none. If someone would like to make a motion, which begins on page four, and we have the amendment on the new page five, and please have a look at that.
If I could elaborate on my previous response that I-
Of course.
...think might do the job a little bit better, the law says the board is required to make positive findings on those numbers one through five. The portion of the law that directs you as the approving authority to address the general purposes of zoning, you'll notice one of them is provided for orderly, thorough, and expeditious review. You don't have to find that each application has received that. In other words, that portion of the law is just directing you how to do your job. So I think in reviewing this application, just like everything that comes before the board, you're focusing, focusing your review on all those one through eight general purposes of zoning. It should be distinguished from the required findings.
And Amy, there's also the additional issue of regardless of the findings and the considerations, we are subject to our subdivision regulations and our zoning ordinance.
Yep, the subdivision regulations, the zoning ordinance, and the comprehensive plan are all background law that the board has to abide by.
Thank you, Amy. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll give it a try. The South Kingston Planning Board hereby grants preliminary plan approval to Magnolia Lane multi-household land development project- to Magnolia Lane Multi-Household Land Development Project, a two-duplex, four-unit multi-household development located on Magnolia Lane. J. Thomas Investment, applicant owner. This approval is based upon entitled preliminary plan submission. Magnolia Lane Development, South Kingston, Rhode Island. Assessors plaque 57-1, Lot 121. Sheet one through nine dated April 6, 2021, with revisions through May 16, 2022, completed by Dupree Engineering, Two Stafford Court, Cranston, Rhode Island, 02920. This approval is based on the following findings of facts, conditions of approval. Findings of fact, A through G, conditions of approval, one through 10.
As amended.
As amended.
We have a motion from Peter. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Joe. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Abstentions? Nays?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item is a public hearing continued from June 28, 2022. Development Plan Review Advisory to Zoning Board, Plant-Based Compassionate Care, Inc. Is there anyone representing the applicant? Jamie, can you give us an update on this item?
Madam Chair, we did correspond via email through Jay Parker on our staff to the applicant stating that we need to hear from them with regards to their application, and that if we did not hear from them, it is our recommendation that in essence you table this application indefinitely, and that any reactivation of the application will require a new public hearing notice to all of the abutters. Again, this has been continued month after month after month.
Total period of time, yes. Amy, any additional thoughts with regard to that? Seeing as there is no applicant here this evening, and the planning department has not received any information with regard to this particular project, are you here for this?
Hello, James Callahan, Callahan and Callahan, 3 Brown Street in Wickford. I was on the email chain with Mr. Parker and Mr. Rabbit. I did not hear from the applicant either, but I'm taking that to mean that they had no objection to the tabling of this application.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan.
If there are no further questions or comments from board members, would someone like to make a motion to table this item indefinitely? Susan?
I'll make a motion to table this item indefinitely.
We have a motion from Susan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Liz. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Our next agenda item, public hearing advisory development plan review, Fox Real Estate Holdings. I am recusing myself from this item.
Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing advisory development plan review for the Fox Real Estate Holdings. This is a proposed change use from bed and breakfast to eight-room residence, requested in waivers from landscape requirements and subdivision land development regulations, which will also require a special use permit from the zoning board. Do we have someone here representing the applicant?
Hello again, Mr. Chair. Congrats on your promotion, James Callahan, Callahan and Callahan, 3 Brown Street in Wickford. Good evening to all the members of the council and the staff here as well. It's quite a collection of staff. I'm impressed by the attendance tonight. I'm here tonight on behalf of James and Martin Fox, who are here with me of Fox Real Estate Holdings. The Foxes are the, through their holding company, the owners of 1747 Mooresfield Road. You might be familiar with this property. It's an impressive residence located in the northern side of Route 138, about a quarter mile east of the intersection of 138 and 108. As you likely saw in the materials, the residence is a neo-colonial-type architectural residence built in 1932 and 1933. It has eight bedrooms, and it was most recently operated as King's Rose Bed and Breakfast. The Fox family purchased the property in 2020. Since then, they've replaced the roof, gutters, windows, siding, trim, and insulation, and they're also working on a new HVAC system. The Foxes have worked diligently to maintain the sterile qualities of the home while providing energy-saving, updated features. Tonight, we are here asking for a development plan review and a waiver for the western 10-foot buffer due to a newly installed or proposed driveway. We require development plan review because we're also seeking a special use permit to allow more than three unrelated individuals to reside at the residence together. Section 504B of the town ordinances lays out the detailed requirements for this type of occupancy. In the package of materials, we also provide at the TRC, and we did meet with the TRC twice, and we thought those are very productive meetings, and we came away with a lot of changes, which are incorporated into the plans that you see now. And Mr. Fox has provided the lease that he will use, which we think is detailed and targeted to avoid any large gatherings, parties, unrelated behavior, that type of thing. I think Mr. Fox is going to focus his tenancy, if approved, on older students or graduate students that he hopes will be productive members of, you know, the community and society at large at that area. Obviously, this will help serve the housing needs of your eye, and with a responsible landlord, hopefully it'll be an asset to the SK community and the university itself. So at this point, I'd like to ask Mr. Fox to come up and say a few words, if you would.
I'll start by saying that the model we're using for this project is the Eldred Farm Development. It's up at the university. It's eight houses owned by Paul Sherman, and I have a business relationship with that. That is one of the only other people who possess this special use permit, which the town requires, but it's often overlooked. So we're trying to do things the correct way. There are eight hours, eight houses up there. They've been successfully rented by up to 40 tenants for eight years now, with no negative impact on the community, no police calls. And we feel that, there are two reasons why that works there. Number one, you're providing the students with an exceptional place to live, a nice surroundings, in our case, a beautiful old house with almost three acres of land. And you're also, and coupled with that, we have a very strict and serious lease that our tenants are required to sign, and their parents are required to sign. And we, we have, if you've looked over the lease, you can see it's, it's quite long. It's 19 pages long, and it specifies all the things that you're not allowed to do on the property and all the things that are expected of you on the property. And you can be released from your lease for any number of reasons, including any disturbance or harm to the community. What we, what we were trying to accomplish is a nice, quiet place to live, preserving this historic house, and providing enough income just to keep that house preserved, so.
Mr. Fox, you were, you were present at the meetings of the Technical Review Committee, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you made changes at their recommendation to ensure the property maintains its residential feel. Is that fair to say?
Correct. We, we moved some parking around at the suggestion of the committee, and, and yeah, more screening and that sort of thing.
And one of the recommendations was to move three parking spots to the rear of the property, to the northern side. Is that fair to say?
That's correct.
And as part of that procedure, there was an additional driveway proposed to be installed on the western property line?
Right. The house is located on the very western part of the lot. In order to access that back parking area...
Mr. Fox, can you please speak in the microphone?
Sorry.
Although we can hear you, though, it won't get recorded.
Sorry?
Although we can hear you, it won't get recorded.
Okay. So anyway, we need a nonbuffered access to the back of the lot. I will mention that the lot, the neighbor there, is a 60-acre hayfield. So there aren't any abutters, neighbors, houses in view of, in view of the house from anywhere on the property, so.
And also, you agreed during the TRC review to prohibit access to the third floor based on recommendations by the fire marshal, I believe?
Right. Fire marshal has indicated that he's not comfortable with granting that, the third floor because of, previously, there was grandfathered-in variances to the access, to fire escapes and so forth. So we've agreed to only use the second and first floor in the house, and on the second floor, there are two stairwell egresses. And like I say, we're in the process of working out the final agreement with the fire marshal.
And you understand that if you're granted a special use permit, there are some provisions you have to provide or abide by in the future, including that you have to go back to the zoning board every three years to renew the special use permit application?
I understand the requirements.
And you also must be in compliance with the state building code for occupancy at all times?
That's correct.
And you need to file with the building official a name of a property manager who will receive all complaints and notices?
That's correct.
And who will that be? Do you know?
That will be my son or myself, or if we have any kind of a property management, we'll, we'll register it with the town.
And at the renewal stage, in the event this is approved in three years, you're required to report any police activity or complaints with the registered zoning officer as part of the application?
That's correct.
And you're willing to abide by all those requirements and conditions recommended by the TRC?
Absolutely.
And anything else you'd like to add?
Nope. I'll answer any questions anyone has.
The project team form, you do not have a long list of professionals that you have on your team. As part of this process, did you seek the help of any other professionals? And if so, can you tell me what roles they played? And kind of looking at things like landscape architecture and how you came up with what you did and what professionals or where the experience came that kind of brought you to that conclusion?
We have Ms. Beck here from Principi Engineering. She'll be testifying next about the, the site plan and those type of provisions.
She's a landscape architect.
And she is apparently a landscape architect as well.
Great. She's not listed on the, maybe it's missing.
Right. There was a, a shift in the team mid-process. Mr. Rosen was our engineer. He's since had a, a change in employment. He's no longer with Principi, so Ms. Beck has been working with him during the process and now has taken over. If that makes sense.
Is this something you can just revise that, just so I could reflect?
Definitely.
Okay, that'd be great. So we'll hear from all your team, and then we'll ask questions.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Ms. Beck to come up to testify. Can you please state your name?
Karen Beck, Registered Landscape Architect.
And Ms. Beck, where do you work?
I am employed with Principi Engineering, 27 Secant Ridge Drives, Turden, Rhode Island.
How long have you worked there?
I've been with Principi Engineering a little over a year. Prior to that, I was with Commonwealth Engineers and Consultants, Inc. of Providence, Rhode Island, for 33 years.
Did you work on the site plan for 1747 Mooresfield?
Yes, I did.
And can you please explain to the board the process you went through to help create this plan?
Over the course of the time that I've been at Principi Engineering, I worked with Josh Rosen and Tom Principi, who is the owner of Principi Engineering, to accommodate the desires of the client, the owner of the property, as well as getting comments from the town's support staff, as well as the TRC, et cetera. So with my knowledge of the process, as well as doing other projects that are very similar to this, we looked at trying to accommodate a historic structure with a new use and make sure that it blended into the residential neighborhood and make sure that we accommodated all the comments from the town, et cetera.
And as part of the plans, what did you do to rearrange the parking plan to move some spaces to the backside of the structure?
It was our understanding that it was a recommendation from the town to have fewer parking spaces in the front of the residence in order to reinforce the idea that this is a residential structure, not something that's necessarily multifamily or commercial or anything like that, but to make it look as residential as possible. So therefore, the suggestion was made to have fewer parking spaces in the front and move them to the rear. So that is what we accomplished.
And as part of that process, a new driveway area was installed to the western buffer. Is that fair to say?
That's correct.
And due to the proximity of the storage or garage, as listed in the site plan, there really isn't room for a 10-foot-wide buffer in that specific area. Is that fair to say?
That's correct. The driveway that's going to run between the property line and what's identified as an existing garage is really only wide enough for one car to pass through that area. So we needed to make sure that it was as wide as we could possibly make it for safety purposes, and that in turn reduced the amount of landscape that we could place between the edge of the driveway and the property line.
And as Mr. Murphy mentioned, did, I'm not sure if we did, but did we consider other landscape factors, buffer included, in the site plan?
We did. And in fact, we looked at a number of different methodologies for screening in accordance with the town's regulations. So a screen fence, or evergreens, or shrubs, or those sorts of things. Again, it's a very limited area, but we're, in order to have those parking spaces to the rear, as was suggested to us by the town, we needed to have that driveway present. And therefore, we are proposing to do evergreen shrubs that are going to go in at six to seven feet in height, two feet on center. That's very close, so these are going to screen from the get-go year-round.
And as part of this process, did Principi undergo new storm drainage calculations?
We did. The way that the regulations are written, that we need to make sure that our post-development flows coming off the property are equal to or less than our pre-development flows, and that drainage design is accommodated on what we're showing here. So the new impervious surface areas, which is the driveway areas, the parking areas, drain into two different infiltration basins that are designed per the state regulations. And that makes sure that for the one, the 10, and the 100-year storm event, our post-development flows are less than our pre-development flows.
And in your opinion, do these changes and these efforts made by your offices, does this plan itself pose any issues to the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding area?
No, it accommodates all of those concerns.
And do these plans, as submitted, except for the one waiver request, comply with the town's subdivision regulations?
It does.
And this proposal, at least in your review, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan?
It is.
And is there anything else you'd like to add prior to any questions from the board?
Other than the fact that as a registered landscape architect, this is a really beautiful site. I believe that it's done a really nice job of infiltrating it into the landscape, infiltrating it into this town, as well as accommodating a really beautiful historic structure that from the exterior, quite frankly, you're not going to be aware of the change in the use, et cetera. So the landscape plan, the design of the system, separating the parking... separating the parking spaces into smaller parking areas, definitely does do a really nice job of blending this into the town.
And just for reference purposes, I think that this plan actually provides more parking than is required by ordinance?
That is true. We only need eight parking spaces and we're providing 11, one of which is a handicap-accessible parking space.
I don't think we have anything further at this time.
You are requesting a waiver from the landscape requirements? For consideration of the board, from the board on that, can you specifically point out on the site plan what would be required to meet the landscape requirements? And what is, and why that's not being opposed? So, if you can point up there and kind of show what would be required and why you're proposing not using it?
So, the very dark shrubs in the green here are Green Giant Arborvitae. They're going in at 5 to 6 feet, 8 foot on center. They will accommodate a 10-foot buffer right from the get-go. As you come farther south, we are proposing the 6 to 7-foot junipers, again, evergreens, that are going in at 6 to 7 foot, 2 feet on center. And will have a very distinct screening function. However, it's not 10 feet wide because we need to have the ability for those three parking spaces to be able to back up and be able to come out facing towards Mooresfield Road rather than backing up onto that area. There's a very short section immediately adjacent to what is labeled the garage because again, we need that one-lane driveway to be accommodated in that area. The only way we'd be able to put a 10-foot-wide buffer and a driveway would be to either destroy that garage structure or to pick it up and move it over, which would be very costly and not historically adequate. As you come farther south, again, we have a little bit of a widening area for the buffer zone. We go back to the junipers, 6 to 7 feet, 2 feet on center. And then we come a little bit farther south, coming down towards Mooresfield Road, where again, we're going back to the Green Giant Arborvitae at 5 to 6 foot. And again, that's approximately a 10-foot-wide buffer zone. So, there's only a very narrow area that doesn't meet the 10-foot-wide buffer zone. But we've tried to accommodate that by having evergreens, very large, very close together, doing a screening function between what is aesthetically or actually the existing structures that are present on the site that we would prefer not to have to, you know, remove and replace.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from board members? Susan?
Hi.
Hi.
I have a couple of questions. So, I'm not quite sure where to start, so my notes are sort of all over the place. But, so I drove by the house today, and I'm trying to tell where the western property line is. Is it the rusty fence that runs between the property and the hayfield?
Correct.
So, on your side of that fence, there are a number of trees. There are, there's a whole row of deciduous trees, I think maple, it was hard to tell, I was driving by, all along that property line. And then on your side, there's a clump of maybe cedar that are beside the driveway? And I took a photograph, and I can show you with my phone. But I'm wondering, are you taking out a bunch of trees to make that driveway straight and to be able to fit in all these Arborvitae? Or are you working to the east of all of the deciduous trees that are on the project site?
We do have to remove some of the species that are present on our side of the property line due to getting the grades accommodated for vehicular access.
That's already been done. Talk to the neighbor, there's one tree.
Ms. Chairman, we will not be able to pick up the.
So, one tree has been removed, and it's already been done because its root system is in that drive area there. It doesn't impact the screening to any great extent. I discussed taking that tree down with my neighbor. It's actually right on the property line, and he said, "Go ahead, no problem, take it down." So, that's been done. So, no other trees. Susan, no other trees that, nothing that you see there is coming down, is my understanding. We're not taking trees down to put smaller trees up, are we?
The driveway, the footprint of the driveway right now is the footprint that the driveway will have when you're completed? Or are you shifting the driveway, or I should say driveway and parking area? Because you do have, sorry, it's hard because nobody else is looking at my photograph. There's the gravel driveway, there's a small amount of turf, and then there's a clump of cedar trees and a bunch of deciduous trees along the property line. Those will not be removed?
The smaller vegetation will be removed. There were some trees, maples, as you noted, that are along the property line. They have very shallow root systems. So, to the extent that we were going to have to impact those root systems, to the extent that it would bother the tree or kill the tree, those are the trees that have been removed. The smaller shrubs, et cetera, don't provide a significant screening function. Again, the goal is to, from the height of a person standing on that pavement area looking towards the abutting property, that we have a screen. Trees don't do that. So, what we are proposing is to eliminate the existing shrubbery that quite frankly, hasn't been maintained over the years and is not in good condition and will not do a screening function. We will be removing those and replacing those with the Green Giant Arborvitae's.
But you have, sorry, you have a dozen, at least a dozen mature trees along that property line?
Are you talking about trees or are you talking about shrubs?
I don't know. They're looking like full-grown. Am I allowed to show them the photograph on my phone?
No, only because it can't really be entered into the record that way. If you could, I don't know if this is going to be continued, but we would need a printout.
Okay.
If that can be emailed to staff, we can project it.
If you could explain to me what your concern is with those shrubs?
Yes, right now.
Susan, does that, does that help?
Behind you. Oh, you can see that way, too.
It's not, because there's no canopy on that photograph. Sorry. If I email this to you, does that work?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me do that right now. I apologize.
So, yeah, for members of the board, what you're looking at is an image from Google Earth or Google Maps, street view on Route 138, looking to the east. So, you're looking in, Mr. Fox referenced, the field that abuts into the west. So, you're looking through the field to a number of larger deciduous trees along the property line. So, I think that's what Susan Axelrod is attesting to, is will those remain or are those being removed and replaced with Arborvitae's and your junipers?
I was right at the entrance to the driveway in that left picture. And then there's a second picture where I was out on 138. So, it's that left-hand, thank you for showing that, Jay. It's that left-hand edge of the driveway that right now has a number of mature deciduous trees and then a clump of what might be cedar, a little closer to the garage, that I'm just questioning whether or not they're going to stay or whether they're going to go.
No, the cedar are going to go. Again, we're widening the driveway in order to make sure that it accommodates the traffic. And up until the garage, it's going to be two-way traffic. So, we have to be able to allow the parking, the people who park in those parking spaces in front of the building to be able to back up and come out. So, some of those, some of the vegetation that's on our side of the property line will have to come out. But we will be replacing them with very large evergreens.
Most of those trees that you're looking at, most of those trees that you're looking at are on the property line. And therefore, I don't believe they come into play here, the bigger trees.
They're sort of, yes, they're intermixed along with that fence.
Right. The fence is the property line, and it kind of weaves between those trees. The ones that are on the property line, I'm not intending to take down. They're quite nice trees. So, if we have to plant something in front of them that screens more, personally, I think there's quite adequate screening there between the field. But if you require us to have more of the evergreens, that's what we're trying to accommodate here.
Can I just ask a quick question while we're looking at this photo? So, the trees behind the red pickup or vehicle that I see there, closest to the road, those are staying. I can see the cedar beyond.
Right.
But what I'm seeing there is staying.
Come into play, but they're backed up by other cedars or other trees.
I mean, I guess, you know, my feeling is when I look at that, I'm looking at a South Kingstown landscape.
Right.
And when I look at a row of Arborvitae marching out to the road, I'm no longer looking at a South Kingstown landscape.
Well, to me, I prefer that, but.
And again, we wouldn't remove any of the vegetation except for the fact that we do have to widen the roadway or the driveway a little bit. And second, we're being required to provide a 10-foot-wide screen. And your regulations have very specific information relative to how you accommodate that 10-foot-wide screen. And those trees don't do that. So, we're trying to accommodate it. But if you would like us to remove what we're proposing and just keep the existing vegetation that we can, we would be all for that.
I think this is much preferred along Mooresfield Road to the Arborvitae screen.
I agree with that.
I'll go on record as saying I agree completely with that. And I think, Susan, I think you noticed along the front, we're putting in actual additional screening along the front.
I haven't gotten to the front yet. I've got questions about that, too.
I think, I think it's pretty well screened already.
Right. So, I understand what you're trying to do here along the western edge of the driveway. But I think that where those mature maples are, putting Arborvitae, which grow fairly tall, sort of tucked in front of them or tucked beneath them, aesthetically, I don't think that's very desirable. It would be a strange thing to come across, as Paul said, on a New England landscape, to find a 30-foot Arborvitae snugged up against a mature red maple. And then also, I think those cedars, from the view from the road, they looked healthy and they looked well-shaped. They're lovely. And so, I think, I'm only speaking, I'm one of seven, but somehow, working with those mature cedars and not taking them out and putting in an artificial screen would be my preference. Especially if we can work around them in some little swoop of the driveway or some way to preserve those cedars, that would be lovely. That would be my vote.
Ms. Chairman, hearing the discussion, if I can offer some suggested language in a recommendation to the zoning board with regards to the subject matter, that the applicant shall submit a plan detailing the trees to be removed to accommodate the driveway and new infrastructure. The applicant shall also submit a landscape plan that is adjusted to retain the existing mature trees and supplement those trees with appropriate under-story landscaping material to create an effective screen.
I think that may be good language that we end up with. I'm not quite sure we're there yet. I kind of want to hear some more discussions from the board members and specifically what they would like to see from the applicant in that area to ensure that we have landscaping that is both native and provides year-round screening. So, Susan, you.
Yep, I'm not quite done, sorry. So, Jamie, I like that a lot, and I think that native rhododendrons, if you go over to Kenny Azalea Garden and grab up some pretty azalea, that would be such a lovely thing there. So, that's my vote. Pardon?
Is nicer, is thicker than a rhododendron and does better around?
But something native, working with this landscape would be my vote. And that's, I know we're preliminary here. So, I have other questions also, and I know we'll come back to this. The landscaping along Kingstown Road, it looks like you've got some winged eunomus and a lot of bullbrier and other, maybe some bittersweet in there. Is there a plan for retaining a nice buffer? I don't, I'm not terribly concerned with buffering the house, but I am concerned about the four parking spots there. And I think that if I was a clever college student, I could fit two more cars parallel to Kingstown Road, right in that first little driveway there. So, you're potentially looking at six cars and maybe even a couple in the snow retention area. So, that could be a little mini parking lot out by Kingstown Road. And much of the buffer is deciduous and invasive. So, I appreciate that you're putting in a few plants here that are on your plans, but can this buffer be beefed up with maybe a couple of evergreens or other things? Because even the bullbrier will die back in winter. There's not going to be a whole lot of buffer in winter.
There is more buffer on the inside of that. You know, even in the winter, there's a fair amount of buffer on the inside of it. But yeah, so I, you know, I'm all for, I'm all for screening. That was, you know, we increased the size of that buffer area by quite a bit by eliminating, we did originally have two parking spaces along there behind those two. And so, whatever is legal to have it. But there's a fair amount of buffer because that's the only area where there isn't 10 feet of fairly heavy buffer.
Right. I think actually, one of the photographs, and it's somewhere in my pile, that you submitted along with your application, showed the view from this in the wintertime or early spring.
Yeah.
Which actually shows that a lot of that street-front buffer is indeed deciduous. And personally, I'm not very interested in screening the house because it's so beautiful, but four, five, six, seven, potentially eight cars in that little lot, I would like to see a substantial five-foot screen.
Really don't think that, I mean, we will buffer that, but the idea would be to put the bulk of the cars, let's say eight at a max, between six and eight cars is what we expect to have there. You put three in the back and three in front of the house, and there's really no need to park, you know, to overpark in that area. Those are for gas parking or extra parking, low parking or something. But there's, and in the lease, it specifies that you must stay at your assigned parking and you can't, and nobody else can be in the parking. You can't rent your parking space out. You can't assign it to anyone else. No one can park there if they don't live there and are on the lease.
Okay.
So, I mean, the idea was, is to make that, if you prefer we have the parking around back, the idea is to make that the last, the last parking. The access to the house is better from the other seven parking spots. And like I said, we only require eight.
Joe, would you prefer that we just stick to right now the landscape conversation and then move on to other things?
Versus operations or, yeah, we'll get to the operations. We're going to stick to the questions from Ms. Beck right now.
So, the only questions I had, I'm good. Thank you very much.
All right. Just to follow up on a comment, although it may not be your intention to have parking in that area, the truth of the matter is if the parking spaces are there for the purposes of design and landscape, I think we have to just assume that those spots will be fully utilized. And if they're not, so much better. But for the purposes of us evaluating the landscape, that's, that would be what we really have to take into consideration. Do we have any other questions from board members?
Back to just the screening, just so I'm clear. So, on the western, right in front of the garage, where it doesn't look like there's any landscaping, there will be no landscaping. So, when we say we need a waiver for buffing, we need a waiver for all of it there? Okay.
Be able to see the side of the building, which is a nice, collaborative building.
Any other questions from board members? So, my concern with Beck is along Kingston Road. I mean, this is an important area for being an entrance to the Kingston. It's kind of a gateway. I will see as this goes what the board members want. But what I really would like to see, perhaps for further consideration, is a blown-up area site map of that and give further consideration to the screening there, making sure that what's there is both. making sure that what's there is both native and stuff that will provide year-round screening. So that's, I think, something maybe we should ask for more consideration in a detailed plan of that specific area, making sure that those objectives are met.
That's something that you could put a condition. Or are you asking us to prepare a different plan and submit it to you?
What's the pleasure of the board relative to the landscaping in that area? I mean, I personally would advocate for an additional site plan, blown up of that area, showing more details, making sure that landscaping or the screening is both native and provides year-round buffering and screening.
Thank you, Joe. I agree. And I think maybe identifying which of the species that are in that buffer you're planning to remove because they are invasive. How much bitter, how much of the green we see is bittersweet eunomys, bullbrier, and other undesirables? Well, bullbrier is okay, but it doesn't really belong in your front yard. But how much of that will be removed as you clean up that buffer? And then what will be left, I think would be very helpful to see.
Any other comments from board members relative to?
Part of the, this is our third site plan. So my comment back to you would be, I've already lost a year's rental by going back and forth on the site plan. Because that buffer is so deep, that the amount of larger tree trunks constitutes just the tree trunks, constitutes a large amount of buffer there. And so I just, I'd like to move things along. I know it's to say, trust me, I'm going to do a nice job there. But there's a certain amount of trust you have to look at. The reason, you can see in many places, it's, the buffered area is 14 feet wide. It's only in that one area where we have additional planting that it gets within the 10-foot limit.
Thank you. Thoughts from board members as far as your concerns and what you would, what, if any additional information you would like to say?
Yeah, I think I agree. I mean, I think we resolved an important issue along that western border. I have to be honest, what's in front now doesn't bother me, even though a lot of it's invasive, because it just looks like the rest of the road.
And I will say that a lot of that invasive species is on DOT land, state land.
If we let the board members finish their comments, please. Thank you.
However, if we're talking about removing that and replacing it with something else, I think I would like to see a more detailed landscape plan before we go ahead.
We weren't planning on removing any of the vegetation.
Yeah.
I agree. I'd like to see a more detailed landscape plan. I mean, I appreciate your concerns about the delay, but I think it's important that this board understands what's going to be there and how much screening it'll be.
And quite frankly, there wasn't an intent to remove any of the vegetation in that particular area, regardless of the fact, quite frankly, that some of it is invasive species. It is an existing buffer. It's an existing area that functions fairly well as a buffer zone. The majority of it is on the DOT land, which we cannot touch. So therefore, even if we removed species on our side of the property line, they would just come back onto our side of the buffer zone anyway because the seed stock is right there. So the goal was really just to enhance the buffer zone, to make sure that it's 10-foot wide on our side of the property line, but not to touch any of the vegetation, either on the DOT side of the property line or on our side of the property line.
I think that if, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I agree that what's there, as crazy as it looks, it does fit along with that entire stretch of roadway. So if you're not removing all of the invasives and thereby creating a sparse opening, then I don't think I object to bullbrier on the, along the roadside, because.
We're not planning on removing any of the vegetation there.
So that maybe, for me, changes it. I assumed you guys were going to go in and take, if you took out the invasives, you would have very little left there. So that's where I became concerned about a very sparse view of the parking lot.
And that's quite frankly why we're not planning on removing the vegetation.
Does the bullbrier provide screening year-round? Besides for the canes or the vines, I mean, is the foliage?
There's a mix of species that are in there, and there are some evergreens. It's very similar to what's along the western property line. So it's a mix of evergreens and deciduous, a mix of shrubs and trees and some vines, et cetera. But again, if you went in there to try to remove some of the species that are less desirable, you would cut holes in it. And again, it wouldn't last because of the seed stock on the DOT property.
Joe, my biggest concern is this, I think this continuity of the landscape along the road, invasive or not, it's not unattractive. And as long as we're not cutting holes in it, I think I would take back my concern about seeing a more detailed plan. I think if that's going to look like that when this is done, I'm happy with it.
My only concern is that that is a certain time of year. That is at a certain time of year. And what does it look like in January or February? That would be my.
So.
I just have one other concern, and that is, let's remember that it's going to become a parking area. If you look at this photograph now, there's no parking. I mean, you're looking at the side of a really attractive structure. So that's my only concern, is that we're looking at parking.
Right. Just a little clarification, if you could, go ahead, Ms. Reddick, sorry.
Mr. Murphy, acting as chair on this matter. Just listening to the discussion and anticipating some of the discussion, staff has prepared some thoughts with regards to this. Again, your role as a planning board member under this process is development plan review, advisory to zoning. So you're putting your stamp as you see, giving your regulations and what are your concerns, and passing those along to the zoning board who ultimately has jurisdiction on the special use permit. With that being said, I think I may have suggested language to some of your discussion items tonight. The first being, basically that, in addition, the planning board recommends that, and these are all to the zoning board, that the applicant shall submit a full screening slash landscaping plan for proposed parking along State Route 138 to supplement the existing vegetation. In addition, a plan to remove and control invasive plant material between Route 138 and the proposed four parking spaces shall be included and are submitted to the zoning board. So again, there's a discussion of leaving some of it, which could be part of the plan. My recommendation with regards to invasive is that the bittersweet should come down. If the bittersweet doesn't come down, the deciduous canopy over time will be jeopardized. That is a fact. There will be more bittersweet in the canopy over time than there will be deciduous canopy, and those trees will get choked, and they will not survive the competition between the bittersweet and their need to have their own canopy. So again, there's, I mean, some of the, to Paul's comment, the native nature of some of those invasives is the character of the corridor of 138. But that deciduous canopy also needs to be protected if they're going to count that as part of their landscape buffer for that parking. In controlling the bittersweet, there may be an opportunity to do something just behind it. Again, to Liz's point, we're looking at renderings and pictures that don't show pavement and parking spaces in that location with cars. The second item is, kind of deals with the western edge of the property, and that the applicant should submit a plan detailing the number and location of trees to be removed and the number and location of trees that will remain on the westerly border. The landscaping plan shall be modified to reflect the above, and the landscaping plan shall be modified to supplement the existing vegetation and understory plantings to serve as an adequate buffer slash screen, utilizing native plant materials. Again, to Mr. Fox's point, there's a fairly substantial existing mature deciduous canopy and some evergreen. To remove or replace that with green giant arborvitae and junipers will look less natural than what is there. And there is potentially the opportunity in the first 100 or so feet to preserve some of the existing canopy, but supplement it either with native rhododendrons, mountain laurel, or some other species that serves in the same manner as what will be 30-foot-tall arborvitae that don't necessarily look natural to this type of a state setting. In addition, I would recommend that the applicant adds a dumpster detail to the plans that matches and or complements the existing architecture of the existing single-family estate home. That the applicant adds landscaping and or hardscape material to eliminate the potential for parking on the lawn and or undesignated spaces. That was discussed this evening. And that, I'd like to have one more. That they did, and the landscape architect this evening went through very diligently the discussion of the westerly screening with the placement of the arborvitae, the junipers, but did point out that there's a gap. And that gap is in close proximity to a one-way traffic movement with a paved portion of a driveway. And it would be my recommendation that you tie that landscaping together with a hardscape or split rail fence that eliminates the ability for casual trespass on a budding property to the west. So again, in the drawing you see up there, your recommendation would be, you would have the arborvitae, juniper, split rail fence, juniper, arborvitae. And it would close that gap from an aesthetic standpoint. You have that type of railing system within the community adjacent to this area. Again, I think there's open discussion about the green giant arborvitae and the junipers and trying maintaining some of the existing canopy and supplementing it with natives.
Just to clarify also, there's an existing fence that is on the property line for the entire length between these two properties. And there is existing vegetation also on the abutters property, trees, et cetera. So this is enhancing the buffer zone between the two, but there would not be casual passage between the two areas because there's an existing fence. We can change the species to something lower. Again, we were trying to, rhododendrons get very wide, and they don't always get very big. So we were trying to put species that we would know would do a really good job screening. And quite frankly, we're also paying attention to the fact that this is deer heaven, and rhododendrons are a favored species. So we're trying to accommodate a number of different items. I've done a number of projects here in the town of South Kingstown. I was at the University of Rhode Island for four years as the campus landscape architect. I'm very aware of what the goals are here in the town as far as what it looks like. I would also point out, quite frankly, that this particular property was landscaped by a landscape architect. It's part of the historic nature of the property. And there are quite a number of non-native species that are present on the site. So introducing arborvitae, the green giants, which won't be eaten by deer, will be evergreen, are not that unusual for this particular site.
Would a classic landscape architect of this nature in this estate use a green giant arborvitae? I would say no, in my experience of 34 years as a planner. Again, we're looking at native species. You're not screening a Public Works garage. You're not screening a Walmart. This is an estate setting, and I think there is more appropriate material than green giant arborvitae.
Do we have any additional questions from board members for testimony provided by Mrs. Beck?
I do, I have, sorry, I have one more question. So Jamie mentioned it, but I think that we haven't talked about potentially putting shrubbery or little fences or something around the parking areas so that the snow removal area and that, I think it's lawn between the front buffer and that driveway and back behind the building, the lawns do not become parking areas. And I think some low shrubbery or some other plant material or some split rail fence or some other kind of thing, subtly around the parking areas to prevent kids from parking on the lawn might be, especially right up front by the buffer. Like, I just don't want to see this become a free-for-all with parking on lawn spaces instead of parking areas. And I think there's a lot of lawn around some of those parking areas where you could squeeze cars in where they don't belong.
Right. I think the plan obviously is not to have any parking on the grassy areas. We're providing more parking spots than already necessary. And I don't think Mr. Fox is going to allow, under any circumstance, parking in a grassy area. That would be considered a violation of the terms of the lease and grounds for eviction, really.
I feel confident, your lease is excellent. I love everything about your lease. But if next year you sell this property to somebody else, this is what's going with a landlord who might not be as diligent as you. And so I think that's maybe causing me to have a little more concern. Not that I don't think your lease is excellent and really, really tight, and I love it. But what happens if you were to sell this property in a year and a new landlord wasn't so careful about numbers of cars parked on lawns and rubbish blowing around and how many kids are sleeping over that don't belong there? And I think that's part of the concern, too.
And we think that, we'd hope that that wouldn't happen. He's not planning to sell. And additionally, that three-year renewal process does come up, and any new landlord-owner has to go through this process all over again. And if there are violations through grassy parking areas, trash, parties, those should be addressed, not putting a onus on the town, but the town should stop by once in a while and check it out. And if there's a violation, file it, because that's going to prevent this from being in this kind of multi-tenant space in the future.
Yes, but three years is a long time.
Sometimes. It goes by pretty quick.
Mr. Chairman, staff's comfortable with, you know, those snow removal areas? Again, they're structured areas. And to me, that is potentially the 13th, or 12th, 13th, 14th, and 15th parking space that could be accommodated on the site. I think, again, to Mr. Fox's point, what he's trying to accomplish here, there are subtle opportunities to add a, just a planting bed or some subtle hardscape in one or two areas, just to make sure and to ease some of the concerns of the planning board members with regards to overflow parking. And to Mr. Callahan's point, some of it is regulatory and some it is, you know, tenants have to adhere to the intent of the town's regulations as well as the landlord's ability to maintain the property. I think there's a delicate balance that can be found.
There's no further questions from board members relative to Mrs. Beck's testimony? Mr. Callahan, do you have any other team members that you want to present?
No, thank you. Just like to say regarding the landscaping, we're not asking for any relief on the front portion of the property, just potentially adding some more buffer to block the view of the parking lot and the structure. And I think that Mr. Fox is more than willing to maintain as many trees as possible that are currently there on the western property line to keep that canopy. I don't think, his preference would be to not take out any trees. But I think that the driveway forces some widening, and I think Ms. Beck is more than willing to do what she can, to keep as many as she can. And we'd be happy to agree to that, because we think it looks pretty good, too, the way it is. But there are some requirements we have to meet.
I think the concern is that we're changing the use to eight units. And we just want to make sure that the final plan is consistent with the neighborhood and keeping with the gateway to Kingston. So it's not necessarily associated directly with the waiver. But if we're done with the landscape questions, can we, the board members have any questions relative to the operations of the eight unit, relative to whether it be leases, parking, events, or anything else associated with the operations of the facility? Susan?
Sorry, I have questions, too. So this is, so I looked at the plans, and I can certainly see eight bedrooms. Do I see eight bathrooms also? I can only find seven on there. Is there one hidden behind us over at the stairwell?
Yeah, there, well, there are currently seven. If we include the two bedrooms, I think there, I think, how many bedrooms are there? One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four, five, six. You're correct, seven, seven bedrooms, sorry.
So on the first floor, there's a, a space that looks like a self-contained apartment, a bedroom with a nice living space and a kitchen and a bathroom. And I think it's an appropriate space that would be acceptable to a young couple or a young, small family. But if you're renting one student per one bedroom, your intention is to keep that whole apartment available to just one student? Or would you consider renting that to a young family, a couple, a couple with a baby kind of thing?
That can be done, yes. But can't be a sep, it's a single-family home, though, by zoning, and it can't be, it can't, there can't be a separate apartment there. Everyone has to have access to all the cooking facilities and in that apartment. There's no, there's no, there's no saying you couldn't have double occupancy in that bedroom, but it can't be a separate apartment.
Did we talk about this at TRC, that the, the cooking, the kitchen would have to be removed from that area? You could only have one food preparation area for the whole? I thought, I thought we had talked about this.
No, I mean, I mean, I think it was decided that we could have two.
Mr. Chairman, the key was, is that all common areas have to be accessible to all of the residents. So if you look at that, to Susan's point, that area, that was the former garage, that shows a bedroom, and then common area, that common area has to be accessible to the other seven bedrooms.
Okay.
They can't be cordoned off as a separate unit. Because that would be a one-unit apartment and a seven-unit other, or seven-bedroom other.
And Jamie, I don't know if it, if it, I don't know how this weighs in on the equation, but, you know, it was an existing bed and breakfast, so the existing facilities were there. I don't know how Jamie Gorman would consider the change of use to the proposed use while still including the, allowing that kitchen to remain. Because I have, I also have the same concerns with the, in my experience, the, the second kitchen facility is always the problem because it constitutes a second unit, a two-unit, not just a single-family with eight bedrooms. Yep.
Just, just a couple notes. It's important that the applicant consult with the building officials as soon as possible, if you haven't already, regarding the plans for this, because he's the expert on what counts as a bedroom versus a dwelling unit. But I also want to note, because you brought up families, Susan, remember that this is before us and will be before the zoning board because they're asking for permission to establish occupancy by more than three unrelated individuals. So number one, fair housing prohibits discrimination against family, you know, families versus single individuals, people who don't have kids. Number two, related individuals, members of a family, don't factor into the equation for purposes of the special use permit.
Thank you. I think one of the things, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, number one, you're, you're not looking at the most updated floor plan. And there is no, there's not even a door between the main house. That door, that, that's an opening, but that's not a door.
I think one of my concerns is that you have an eight-bedroom house. Why won't you have 16 kids living in that house together? I understand that it's in the lease that we all aren't having sleepovers, but I'd like to understand the enforcement on that. And if a couple were to, you know, you're 20 years old and you're in college, your girlfriend's sleeping over. So how do we keep this from becoming, sorry, you're going to take the, you're going to ride the wave of that house down in Wakefield that has eight bedrooms and 16 tenants? That's been a nightmare to the whole neighborhood. So I'm still thinking about that other house down in Wakefield, and I think you know that neighborhood. How do we prevent this from becoming 16, potentially 16 kids living in this house? Because we don't have the septic or the parking to accommodate that number of people living in the house.
I, I know you want to hear the applicant's response to that question, but I want to just remind, I know you know this, but enforcement of any zoning restriction is complaint-based. And obviously, when you have a lot of college kids in one place, there will be complaints. And in cases where the building and zoning official investigates complaints of potentially more unrelated persons living, living at a dwelling than permitted, or, you know, a situation where someone hasn't come to the town to get the appropriate special use permit, the building official reaches out to the landlord and requests a copy of the lease. The lease reflects three unrelated individuals. It would typically end there. However, the zoning official also has the authority to investigate, you know, driving by the property. Because you're right, occasional guests aren't factored into this, and they're to be expected. But if someone's staying there, you know, let's say, four nights out of the week versus two or one, so there are no fine lines to determine when a guest becomes a tenant. But that is something that would be within the purview of, of the building and zoning official to enforce.
It's also in the lease that no, no guest can stay more than two nights. And, and the septic system that I put in, honestly speaking, it's, it's an eight-bedroom septic system. So that, there's the assumption that there are two people in a bedroom. I don't intend to, to do it, but I, I'm not signing any more maximum between six and eight leases.
I guess the two questions I have is, on a day-to-day basis, how will you really be able to keep your thumb on top of how many people are sleeping here? Like, in a practical sense, how will you know if everyone's girlfriend's spending the night every night or not? Like, I guess, there's that, there's that hands-on, how do you know? And then, if the police aren't being called, how will you know how many people are there?
Well.
And then also, there's always the question also of, again, I'm sure you'll own this house for the next 50 years, but if you don't, then we've got an eight-bedroom house that's being rented by a different landlord. So.
Yeah, well, it, it's, it's in the lease that violations of the lease by one member or any member of the people that are living there are grounds for eviction of all of them. So nobody can say, well, his girlfriend isn't living here. We're pretty, we're pretty hands-on, and we'll be there. I mean, I live eight minutes away.
Does this permit that we're talking about, or this zoning allowance, limit the number of tenants? Or would you just say we're approving no more than, or three, three or more unrelated?
The, the application comes to the zoning board where the applicant has nailed down the number of unrelated individuals that are proposed to reside in the dwelling unit. So whether it's four, as more than three, five, six, and so on. The zoning board would approve, if it approves the application, approves it contingent on the plans that are submitted. Additionally, the zoning board can impose a condition, perhaps, you know, if someone came in asking for five unrelated individuals, they would say, we're not going to approve occupancy by more than four for reasons X, Y, and Z. You know, the, the board, just like, just like this board can, the zoning board can impose reasonable conditions on the approval based on the conditions of the property and conditions of the neighborhood.
So they are saying occupancy of no more than eight. And so therefore, if there are 16 people living there, it's a clear violation?
Right, yeah. It's, it's a special use permit. It's not a dimensional variant, so I want to make that clear. But it would be a special use permit for a definite number of unrelated individuals.
The special use permit requires a three-year re-up. So it's, you know, it's three years.
And i, if this question's out of line, stop me, but you have another property at the corner of Flag Road and, is it Old North Road or North Road? I always get them confused.
Old North Road.
Old North Road. What's the other property there called? Eldred Farm, a similar situation to this?
Well, that's standalone houses.
That, yeah, that, I'm sorry. That was a subdivision with house, house lots, with single-family houses built.
But it's the same thing. It's, I have one single-family house, we have eight single-family houses there, anywhere from two to five or six people in each one.
And is that under a special use permit as well in that?
Yeah.
I guess not, because it's a, it's a subdivision.
If they have more than three unrelated people living there, they do require a special use permit. I don't know the current status of the special use permit for that development.
They've applied for it and were.
Mr. Fox's voice will not be picked up in the mic. Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Yeah, they do have a special use permit for that.
If I can just clarify while we have this up, Mr. Fox, you, you mentioned that this was not the most current plan?
No, I, I.
This is the plan.
If you all look at your plans that you have.
This is the plan that was downloaded on July 5th. This is revision 1.2 that you had submitted. So this is what the board has also, if that was included in, as hard copy.
So your digital copy that you gave us is different than your paper copy?
No, this was originally submitted as a digital plan. That's why it's digital.
This is the digital package.
This is the digital package.
There's no other floor plan on that?
There is, there is a series.
Stated one?
There's a second floor, a first floor, a second floor, a third floor.
There's another first floor plan which I submitted. And it's a copy, it's in the packet that everybody has.
The primary difference between the hard copy and the digital that you see on there is that door, the swinging door between the garage unit is.
Since we eliminated the use.
May I finish?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. The primary difference that was discussed earlier with regards to the connection between the garage and the main living space is the removal of that door to a cased opening. That, I think, that gets to Susan's question earlier on about that being an independent unit. That doorway has been removed, and it's just shown as a cased opening.
And Jamie, there's also a bathroom located in this area.
Yes, in the southwest corner of the home.
Sorry, I have more questions, whenever. So I've seen this, this lease that you have for students from September to May. What is the plan for June, July, and August?
Generally speaking, in the other properties, the, the, there's a summer lease, a three-month summer lease for summer students. Or they're vacant, or, you know, the house could be rented as a whole to a family.
Could this become an Airbnb, Amy? Could this be a transient Airbnb, short-term rental situation during the summer?
The town does not regulate Airbnbs or short-term rentals. However, as I said, the zoning board could, and I would say might, condition the special use permit on no short-term rentals. I can't recall if they've done that in the past, but again, there is no regulation on short-term rentals town-wide. So the board could consider whether this property would not be appropriate for short-term rental. I, I don't think it is in the special use permit regulation.
Thank you. So, Joe, if you want to go ahead.
I was going to say, I don't think we should refer to them as Airbnbs. That's just a mechanism for advertisement. There's other forms as well, so we should refer to them as short-term rentals.
I agree. Oh, my God. If you have questions, go ahead, I'm.
Well, so, Amy, to follow through on that, where the zoning board could limit that one way or the other, I guess they could also limit it, that if there is short terms, that it is for the structure as a whole versus individual rooms?
They, they could impose whatever conditions they think are reasonable for the special use permit.
And if this board thinks it's appropriate that there should be some limitations, could that be part of, would that, should that be part of our?
You can recommend really whatever you want to the zoning board. I think what is, what would be most helpful for the zoning board is recommended conditions of approval related to the reason there before you, which I, sometimes projects can come before you for development plan review, and the DPR requirement might be triggered by a number of different triggers in the zoning ordinance. In this case, I'm not sure if the only reason they're here before you for DPR is advisory to the zoning board on the unrelated person's special use permit. So that's, I think, what the zoning board really wants your detailed review on, is, is this property, the layout, you know, are the plans appropriate for this type of use? And what conditions of approval would, would benefit the property and the neighborhood?
Okay. I think that the piece of that, though, is that for this use, the use could be considerably, I would view it considerably different for an academic versus what the potential for the summer is. And therefore, it's probably something that we should make comment on when we give some recommendation to the zoning board.
I'd also like to add, if we're able to indicate that there's going to be a maximum number of residents of this space, I'd also.
So, so we can do that only regarding unrelated individuals? Because for constitutional reasons, we can't limit the number of family members.
I understand. That's great. Thank you. But if we can do that, I would also like to pick some other really good things out of Mr. Fox's lease. Can we also add as a condition some of the other things he had, which were like, you know, no open flames, no barbecues on the patio, he had no firearms? Like, there were a bunch of conditions, no big parties, no parking on the lawn, trash blowing around the neighborhood, it must be put in receptacles. Like, there were lots of conditions in his lease that I would like to see as conditions that went with the property, not just with the lease. Like, he has some really good conditions in his lease that I think would be valuable because I think we're starting a precedent, we're, we're setting a precedent here, and I think we're going to start seeing more and more houses like this come before us.
Susan, I want to stop you because we had discussion from the, from the applicant and the different team members, and our questions right now should be relative to that. We are going to have a general discussion about what our concerns are, but before we do that, I'd like to open it up, public comment, and then you can also hear their concerns, and then we can have the discussions.
Okay. Thanks.
So with that said, there, this is a public meeting. Is there anyone here that would like to come up and express concerns or? Okay. So I guess we'll open it up to the questions and the concern, or the concerns of the board members.
Mr. Murphy.
And what they would like to see.
Joe, just with regards to conditions or recommendations to the zoning, and again, I, I appreciate the discussion, but conditions need to be relatively enforceable. So whether someone has a license to carry, as an example, how does a zoning enforcement officer enter the property and determine whether someone is licensed to carry or not? That is a difficult zoning violation to ever enforce. So again, I've always been taught over the years that if you're making recommendations to a board or you're making conditions, that they are relatively enforceable and in plain sight. You know, as long as they're not a health, safety, public welfare kind of fire code or, you know, life safety issue, again, readily enforceable. A regulations control garbage and garbage collection and placement on, of trash on the property. Those are readily enforceable and visible. But things internal to the site, zoning enforcement officer does not have the, the staff or capabilities to regularly knock on doors and enter property without calls.
We would routinely advise the zoning board and this board, when it comes up, to let private matters be private matters because it's the landlord's job to enforce the lease conditions, not the town's job. And when a board sometimes incorporate conditions of private agreements into our approvals is when problems can arise later on, and the town's up, ends up enforcing something that it really has no business enforcing. So what I would suggest is, I, I agree with Jamie. I think the handful of things we just mentioned, there are different tools in the town's toolbox to address those issues, but to the extent you think the existing special use permit regu- to the extent you think the existing special use permit regulation on unrelated persons should be revised, that can, of course, be added to your full plate of work.
Question? Or comment, I guess. I think, you know, nineteen-page lease, trying to address all of these issues that, you know, we're concerned about, a party house. We have that three-year review. If there are problems, you know, if there's a wild kegger out there and the neighbors are all complaining at three o'clock in the morning, you know, if it happens in the first summer, all right, and so we've got a couple of years, but I don't think that's going to happen. I think the investment in the property is sizable enough that renting to a bunch of crazy kids that are going to tear it apart seems unlikely. I understand it's possible, but I also think that because we have that opportunity every three years to revisit this, I think we're pretty well-covered.
And I'll add that I generally hear about problematic properties in town and code violations. That's part of my job. The zoning board has reviewed and approved a handful, I don't remember the exact number, I want to say, under five of these type of applications, and they've even done at least one renewal that I can recall. I don't recall issues arising after an application has been granted. I think the intent of the regulation was that the public hearing process and this review process would kind of weed out any problem, problems or potential for problems kind of before they became legally established. So maybe problems are out there that I'm not aware of, but I think it's a good thing that I haven't been made aware of any problematic properties for which these type of special use permits have been granted.
Can I have a couple more questions?
Go ahead.
There used to be a sign out front that said Kings Rose. Are you planning to put a sign out front for anything to label this house? Sorry, Amy, can you get back up?
We intend to continue to develop the landscape and the property as time goes by, you know. Eventually, I'd like to see a little income come in, but yes, and the Kings Rose is not a name. There are three names it goes by. Hedge Row is, seems to be most prevalent. So we'll...
Would you put a sign up front out on Kingstown Road? Would there be a sign that went with your...
If it's legal, if, you know, if I don't... Yeah, yeah. If you want a sign, I'll put a sign up. I mean...
Oh, I'm not saying I want one. I'm just asking if you're going to have one.
Well, I would generally, I mean, and if you look at any of my other properties, I would generally try to maintain it in the first-class way and develop the landscape and the exterior of the building in a first-class way.
Susan, if I may, there are regulations in the zoning ordinance prescribed for signage, particularly in residential zones, so any signage that would be proposed would have to comply with that.
Thank you. And then I have a last question, and then I will totally leave you guys alone, but I have a question for Amy. So they are applying for this to be a single-family house with eight potential unrelated people. And I contacted Jamie Gorman today with a little question about this, because to me, the tenor seems more like a boarding house, where he's renting to eight unrelated people and is collecting rent from each of those eight people and can evict one of those eight people. So it's not like a family or a group of college friends renting a house together where if half the kids quit college, they still have to come up with the rent. He's collecting his monthly rent from each individual person, which he has solicited individually from the rest of the gang. So does this really, does this fall within an eight-bedroom unrelated household, or does it become more like a lodging or boarding house situation? And I wrote to Jamie, then I asked him, and then he didn't, it was too late in the day for him to get back to me, so I'd just like to clarify how we define boarding house or lodging house versus single-family house, because it's, he's not collecting one set amount of money for the rental of the whole house. He's renting individual bedrooms, more like boarding house style. So I'd just like to understand the definitions of how this is being considered.
I'm not finding immediately a definition for rooming house or boarding house in our zoning ordinance. It may be there. I just might not have found it at my fingertips just yet. But the ultimate classification on whether this is a boarding house, and if so, is that, if that use is permitted, would be in Jamie Gorman's purview as the zoning official. However, if he's, I don't know whether Jamie has reviewed the plans as part of the TRC meeting, if he's aware of this application. My understanding is that it probably wouldn't have come to this board as a boarding house, but I can also say, I don't think this application is any different really in the essence of it from the other special use permits granted for occupancy by more than three unrelated individuals. So I think you're saying, why isn't this a boarding house by virtue of the fact that so many people who aren't related will be living there? And I think the answer is no. It's not a boarding house unless our ordinance defines what a boarding or rooming house is. And I'm still looking into that, but I'm not, yeah, I don't think it does, is why I can't find it.
Can I...
So, that's the answer.
Can I answer that question? From what I know, I started with Jamie almost a year ago on this, and, you know, I've kind of taken his guidance all the way through. The issues are with, the only issue in his mind, if I can answer for him, is the fire marshal's issues. And there are certain statewide regulations that define what is, you know, what safety issues. You have to have fire alarms, sprinkler system, so on and so forth, with more individuals.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. With that said, what is the board's pleasure, it appears to me that we got a couple issues that we want to make sure that we address appropriately. One is the landscape, and the other one is the operations. With regard to the landscaping, we had considerable discussion tonight. Jamie provided some recommendations for some excellent wording. There was discussions relative to the invasive, what would stay, what should stay. There were some discussions relative to the selection of the species on the arborvitae and maybe some of the other vegetation. What is the board's pleasure relative to, would you feel comfortable going forward with the language as presented by Jamie, or would you rather have that, now that Mrs. Beck has heard the concerns of the board, have her hear a plan that reflects our discussions tonight, and maybe also have access to Jamie to provide a more, a revised, more detailed plan? Okay, we'll come back to you. Elizabeth?
You're speaking just about the landscape plan?
Yes.
Yeah, it is still my opinion that we do need to have a more detailed landscape plan.
I guess that's a question I had about what exactly we're doing here. If we put those recommendations in and send them to zoning?
Your review is solely advisory. The, if you recommend approval, the zoning board could deny the application and vice versa. If you recommend conditions of approval, that's just it. They're recommended conditions of approval.
Okay.
My only really outstanding concern is about the vegetation and the tree line, and I don't understand the process of how, how it moves from here, because we are just, this is maybe my first project where we've just recommended to zoning and then we don't see it again. Like I don't understand the process and how, if I say, let's make the buffer as good as possible, and then I pass it off to zoning, is that how that works?
If zoning approves the project and incorporates that as a condition of approval, that's what it becomes. If zoning approves the project and doesn't include that recommended condition as its approval, then it's not enforceable. And if zoning denies it, then it doesn't matter.
So if we continue this contingent upon seeing a more detailed landscaping plan, and then we're happy with that and send it forward, then it's set in... No, still not.
Because again, the ultimate regulatory authority on this approval lies with the zoning board. So I wouldn't accuse the applicant of doing this. If they showed you a landscape plan that you liked, and you agreed that that should move forward to the zoning with a favorable motion, it's still a zoning board to determine whether or not it shows up on the plan, and it's still the applicant's right to remove it from the plan between the planning board and the zoning board. I don't think they would do that. It's not in their best interest, but again, the zoning board has the ultimate authority.
And I just want to add, there's one important component to this, is that the zoning board does rely on the advisory opinion of the planning board. So if it, if it ends up being a recommendation from the planning board to the zoning board, I would imagine that if it is not incorporated, there's a very specific, there should be very specific reasoning as to why. I don't think they would blindly disregard something without a valid rationale for it. I do know that they do look for your advisory opinion.
So just to be clear, if we ask for a landscaping plan and we're happy with it, and we send that forward to zoning saying, this is our recommended approval, that we, this is the landscaping plan that we want to see incorporated, that carries a lot of weight with them, they don't have to abide by it. So in that case, I think we need to, we need to keep going, get the landscaping plan and...
May I interrupt? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that I think the issues with the landscaping have generally been discussed and put out on the table. There isn't a great solution to keeping existing vegetation and supplementing it with something that's going to survive and tolerate being underneath a canopy or in those conditions. You could make your advisory include a statement that the applicant should present a more, the applicant's landscape architect should put together a plan to try to address the board's concerns to the best manner possible, knowing what you're trying to achieve, but not exactly sure of how you're going to get there, and then let the zoning board take that. They, the zoning board would then have received your opinion, saying, look, something needs to get done. We're not exactly sure we would trust or value the landscape architect's opinion in going forward. Now, there's a little bit of trust there. If you guys feel like it's more important that, no, you need to see it. To me, listening to everything, it's kind of like 50/50, because you don't really know exactly what that should look like or what that should consist of. You just know that it should be representative of a natural screen, something that's native to Morse Field Road, doesn't look out of place. Joe?
What we'd be doing is we'd be asking Ms. Beck or the applicant to prepare that. I mean, it's, obviously, it's her expertise, not ours. So it seems like we have a couple possibilities, well, actually, three possibilities. One would be to provide a recommendation to the zoning board based with the words that Jamie proposed. Another one would be request that the applicant take into consideration what they heard tonight and work with Jamie, give us something that we could recommend to the zoning board. And another possibility would be that we could ask them to work with the administrative officer to prepare a plan before it goes in front of the zoning board, reflecting tonight's discussion.
I like that.
Which would possibly save them another trip, but still require that our concerns get addressed before it goes to the zoning board.
Mr. Murphy, I think the key to your third recommendation about working with staff would be a commitment from the applicant that they would revise their plans, or attempt to revise their plans.
Mr. Callahan, would you be? Would save them some time?
Just for reference purposes, when would that be needed to, for submission to the zoning board? A week in advance, or two weeks?
No, it's more than that. They're on an odd schedule that I haven't been able to really figure out yet, but I would say, I would say five or six weeks before the meeting, five weeks before the meeting would be my guess, safe, conservative? Because they historically require you to submit a complete application before they even start the, before you get in the queue. That's my understanding.
Yeah, so the August zoning board meeting is August 17th. The deadline for the September meeting would, is typically on or around the time of the previous month's meeting.
Obviously, Mr. Callahan, what we're trying to do is trying to save you from coming back to this board.
Right. We appreciate that.
But at the same time, making sure that our discussions and our concerns tonight are visually represented when it goes in front of the zoning board.
Right. I think all the suggestions that Ms. Axonrod made, every one we completely agree with, and I think we will definitely incorporate all the suggestions into another plan. I think it'll be the fourth landscape plan that Mr. Fox has had to complete, and we're happy to do that, and we can get that done by August 17th for submission for the September meeting.
Does the board feel that's a good compromise, where, yes, work with the administrative officer and provide that plan to the zoning board? Okay. The second question then really is the operations. Does anybody in the, on the board have any recommendations or things they would like to go, see, go into the recommendations to the zoning board relative to operations? And if so, what are they? Susan?
No, I think, I think between everyone, different ideas came up, and we just need to like, get that list together. And I think, like, one of them was, is there a way to limit residential occupancy to some formula, you know, eight bedrooms plus a couple if it's a family, like, I don't know how to limit that, but I would like to see...
So again, this would be coming to the zoning board on their specific request for, is it eight unrelated persons?
The plan is eight bedrooms, eight people.
Okay, so eight unrelated persons.
Okay.
If one of those eight moves in with a wife and a kid, that's, we can't do anything about that. So the only, it wouldn't be a recommended condition. The zoning board would be, if it approves it, would be approving this for occupancy by eight unrelated individuals. Anyone who, any family members, we can't control.
That's good. So we don't need to put that into our request. That's just the way it's going to be.
Correct.
It's not going to be three plus. It's going to be eight.
Correct. Exactly. You don't come to seek approval for three plus and then get carte blanche to have 20 people in there.
Okay.
My concern, and maybe you could address this, Mr. Fox and Mr. Callahan, would be not the academic lease, because the academic lease is pretty well-covered here, but if you did do short-term rentals by Airbnb or any other method, that being a vacation rental and you rented out the rooms individually, we would certainly end up with a lot more than eight people, since most, since you'd only be renting it, each room to an individual, but if it's Airbnb, they would all have guests. So I don't know, can you address how that would not happen or not become a problem? I mean, the academic lease, this is pretty good. I think that would cover that. How do we ensure that the three months during the summer, we don't have eight groups of people? I think according to the regulations, you'd probably still be fine, because each individual room that was rented would probably be for, you would only rent it to one person. They'd have three or four guests, but each room would be rented to one person. So we obviously don't want to see a situation where you have eight hotel rooms.
Right.
How do we, how do we address that?
Yeah, I don't think it makes much practical sense for Mr. Fox to do that.
People do it in Airbnb all the time. They rent out individual rooms in the house. So rooms that are set up with a separate bedroom and a bathroom in a summer destination place would be very desirable as well as profitable.
Mr. Chairman, based on what Mr. Fox said this evening, there could be a recommendation that short-term rentals are limited to no less than a three-month period and no more than eight individuals.
Would that be a... Yeah.
That's what he stated he would intend to do.
That would allow you to rent it out during the summer, have full occupancy, but on those terms that are very consistent with your academic rental lease, which is what you showed us as how this would be managed. you showed us as how this would be managed. With that said, can you propose something else that would address our concerns that we'd feel comfortable about going to the zoning board with?
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
If you want to make, put a limit on the number of people, would you see my point is students leave on May 15th, or whatever, June, July, and August, if you're going to rent it to other students, they may not be there for the full three months, they, you know. But it's essentially, you're not changing the dynamic, you're not changing the picture of it, if you want to limit the number of people. If you rented it out for a month of the summer to supplement your rent, that's great. But if you limit me to a three-month lease in the summertime, I think that's unreasonable, because the transition times in, in August and May are just too tight. You got to get the place cleaned up, and you got to, you know. Just, just as a matter of common sense.
I hear what Mr. Fox is saying, and I understand his dilemma. So you, you hold the threat of eviction over the heads of your students to make sure that they behave themselves. But if you have a quick turnover population in the summer, so, not that we were partiers, but my, my marriage, my wedding, we rented, we rented bed and breakfast and got married on the lawn. And so I rented a bed and breakfast, and they knew what we were doing. But I rented a bed and breakfast, and on Sunday, we had 150 people on the lawn. That could happen at your house.
Isn't there an ordinance against special events in town?
But it could be a big, a big fat party that you don't have any control because the people aren't there long enough to get evicted. I guess that's my concern.
So I, and just to clarify, a statement that was made earlier, the language of the lease holds all tenants accountable for each individual tenant. So that, to me, is rather unique and particularly powerful from an enforcement standpoint, because the, the town has a very difficult time of enforcing things that happen inside the four walls of our residence. When other tenants are going to be on the hook for somebody's behavior or violation of the lease agreement, I think that's as powerful as we can...
My concern though is that that, that's the academic lease. What we're talking about now is the summer where this academic lease is not applicable.
So would that language be in, I was presuming that that language would carry through for anybody that was there.
So again, Ms. Chair.
Well, it would be, I guess we could possibly make that a requirement, but the way it's proposed right now, this was an academic lease, and the three months in the summer isn't covered, so they could possibly do it by Airbnb and go and buy Airbnb and house rules that you usually use on this.
Given the discussion, we could potentially modify the language that I suggested that recommends that short-term rentals be limited no less than one month period and no more than eight individuals during the non-school year, parentheses, summer.
With using, so I like that, hopefully, board members like that, but also under terms consistent with their academic lease?
My understanding from council is you cannot include the lease in a zoning approval.
Yeah, I would advise the zoning board against incorporating the lease as a condition of approval.
Okay. All right, so just to take, I guess, take stock where we're at, as far as the landscaping goes. It's the board's unanimous that we would like language, where they would propose a, work with the administrative officer and put together a site plan consistent with our discussions tonight, so that a visual plan could be provided to the zoning board. Is everyone happy with the language that Jamie proposed relative to the short-term lease period?
Um, are we using Jamie's language on the site plan as well?
Do you understand the question?
Uh, Jamie proposed, yeah, on the landscaping plan. So are we considering that?
Yeah. So, Ms. Chairman, in answer Mr. Fox's question, and I'll use the example of item number one that I read, that the applicant adds a dumpster detail to the plans that matches and/or complements the existing architecture of the existing single-family estate setting for review by the AO prior to submission to the zoning board. And all of those items discussed would have that same language, reviewed by the AO prior to the submission to the zoning board. And again, my understanding would that be that we would meet and discuss revisions to the plans prior to you going through that endeavor?
Can I, can I meet with this board before? Because I'm having a lot of trouble changing these landscape plans. The reason the arbivators are there in the first place is to provide the legal buffers.
We already discussed that. I think the board has come to a decision on how they want to proceed forward with that.
That's acceptable.
With that said, do you have anything, Mr. Callahan? With that said, I think it would be appropriate if the board, some, a member of the board wanted to put a motion for staff to prepare a favorable letter to the zoning board, recommendation, with those discussions that we held tonight. Do I have a motion?
Ms. Chairman, prior to doing that, you still have an open hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second? Okay. And now, do we have a motion? Okay, a second? Yes, all?
We haven't voted to close the public hearing.
You didn't vote to close the hearing.
We have a motion for, oh, okay, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay. So we'll move on now to a motion to our staff to prepare a favorable member, memo, including those discussions tonight. Do we have that motion?
I change my mind.
Okay, do we have a second?
Wait, so we, do we need a, do we need to understand everything on that list?
I have, Ms. Chairman, I have six primary items, and I'm just going to summarize those. Item one was the dumpster detail. Item number two was detailing subtle landscape or hardscape material associated with parking in undesignated spaces and on the lawn. Three was submitting a plan detailing the location of trees to be removed, trees to be saved, and the landscaping plan to supplement the understory to act as an effective screen, using as much native landscape material that you can. Item four was landscape supplementing the Route 138 invasive species management. Four, tying the two, the western edge two buffer areas proposed together with a central feature, whether it's an upgrade to the fence or modification to the fence. And six would be the recommendation on the short-term rentals.
Just jumped from four to six.
Four, five was the fencing.
Fencing, okay.
Can I ask a question before we move on? As a condition of approval for zoning, can we, is there something that we can do about not further developing or subdividing this property?
No, because it's not, that's not related to why they're coming before the board.
Okay. Thought I'd ask.
And just as a note, anyone can come before the board, whether it's this board or the zoning, you know, they can ask for, there's nothing we can do to prevent someone from asking a board to amend a previously granted approval.
Okay, with that, we have a, a motion for staff to prepare that memo. Do we have a second? We have a second?
Second, yeah.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Did Maria leave for the night?
No, she just had to recuse.
Before Mr. Fox and Mr. Callahan leave, the understanding is, is that there were findings of facts and conclusions in staff's memo, that we are adding those six items to that memo. Okay, thank you.
Sure, can I go to the restroom?
Sure, yeah. We'll take a, a short break, and then...
All right, thank you.
That's what I don't understand.
Yeah.
I probably made a hard one, that's me. That's right. They got their approval, they just have to do a little more work, that's all.
I think they, I think they could have put a little more thought into that landscaping than they did. Yeah, I probably jumped around a little bit, lost a little control.
We got there.
We got there.
We got there, we jumped around a little bit, but...
We got there.
Other than when you...
Okay, so...
to the agenda by request of Jamie Rabbit, Director Planning. It is an update on Cyrus Court Laurel Lane Estates regarding the release of landscape surety. Jamie?
Madam Chair, just a brief update on that, understanding it was added to your agenda tonight, so you cannot take a vote on this, but we'll add it to your work session agenda. Just off of Laurel Lane, access road to the golf courses, Laurel Lane Estates, which is Cyrus Court. Gashi Downey was the developer on that. There was an issue in 2017 with regards to the maintenance of that road. Surety of $34,000 was in place from 2017 to 2020. When I came onboard as a planning director, the developer asked for the release of that, and there were still some outstanding landscaping issues. The developer did do a tree replacement program for some of the deficient trees. That was subject to review on July 1, 2022. The trees that were replaced are still in a healthy condition and growing quite well, even though we had some challenges in the last month or so with regards to rain. So it will be my recommendation to release the final $10,000 surety. And again, we'll put that on your work session agenda. I just wanted you to be aware of it. If we can get through it tonight, it will be a quicker item for the work session.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions for Jamie?
Just a question about, just a question about the process in general, not even associated specifically to this project. But when we do approve the release of the bond, is there any feedback mechanism from people that live in the area and utilize those streets to ensure that they don't have, you know, complaints about...
So it's an interesting question, Joe, because one of my observations is, although the developer did plant the trees and properly mulch them, and the appropriate saucers and dimensions, that the, most of those are on private property, and a few of the homeowners have modified the mulching bed for the trees. That could jeopardize the long-term health, not the developer's responsibility. So I, I have a old, I have to put my hands on it, but I have a wonderful kind of two-page laminated brochure that shows the proper way to mulch a tree, so that you don't have that volcano mulching up against the bark, where you will actually de- degrade the bark and the ability for the tree to wick water up. And I, you know, at the discretion of the planning board or the prompting of the planning board, I think, moving forward, we should supply that to all of the homeowners in developments where street trees are planted, you know, so that when we see it, we just simply put it in their mailbox and say, please be advised. The methodology that you've chosen to plant the trees is contrary to horticultural practices, and would you please mind modifying your mulching beds?
Jamie, I know at one time, the Conservation Commission, they either came up with a pamphlet or had some kind of public outreach with regard to volcano mulching. I, I don't know if they've done anything since, but I know that was one of their big topics of conversation and interest.
It's been a pet peeve of mine for 30-plus years.
Yeah, Madam Chair, the chairman of the Conservation Commission attends TRC frequently and is a stickler for including our planting detail from the subdivision regulations onto the plans.
Yes, he is.
Even though those, the approved plans have the right diagram, it doesn't necessarily preclude it from them not following it.
And again, the homeowners, in most instances, just don't know. They're, they're not knowledgeable in that, and they're, they don't want to, you know, pull weeds around the base of the tree. So they do that.
Thank you, Jamie.
No problem.
Let's move on to report of the administrative officer.
Just with regards to that, I will inform everyone that there is some legislation that is still kicking around Providence, and well as some new legislation that was approved associated with accessory dwelling units and affordable housing. So again, given the hour this evening, I think it's a more subject matter for our next work session to give you a brief update of some of the latest legislation that's been passed and still being contemplated, and how that affects us from the regulatory side.
Yes, I've finally finished that memo after many hours, and I've included, that'll be distributed to you, as well as the zoning board and the council. I've included the laws that I've referenced. There are seven or eight of them. So if, if you get through everything, it's going to be a long read, and yeah, we can answer any questions you have at next month's work session.
Thanks, Amy. I believe that board members will also be receiving an email from statewide planning with their summary of the changes. It doesn't go into the amount of detail probably that Amy's memo does with regard to changes that we're going to have to make in our regulations and process and so on. But there's everything from educational requirements, which is a great thing, to the accessory dwelling units, to reporting requirements, to quorums, to other, many other items.
And the last thing I have is, two council meetings ago, there was a discussion on the new recreational cannabis regulations. The council did vote to take it to town referendum on whether or not retail sales of recreational marijuana and recreational grow facilities, I believe, will be allowed in town. But during that discussion, council advised that we work on developing regulations and have them adopted in place in anticipation... have them adopted in place in anticipation of a vote. If the vote was not to authorize or allow retail recreational marijuana in towns, the regulations would be moot. But if they voted in favor of doing that, you would potentially have those regulations in place and effective. So we'll be working with council as a department, together as a team, developing those regulations.
Thank you, Jamie. And before we adjourn, we need a volunteer for the next TRC, the date of which is?
Uh, August, Wednesday, August 10th.
Wednesday, August 10th. So the day after our next work session. Anybody? Paul?
Do you want to arm wrestle over it? Yeah. It's like victory day that week, right?
So our work session...
How else will it take Tuesday?
Because of the holiday.
If TRC in the morning and then work session that night?
Or it can be at 1:00 in the afternoon, depending on the preference of the volunteer that particular month, so...
I'm happy to do it in the morning.
I could, I can, I can do it too, Paul, whatever you want to do.
You can have it.
Okay, Susan?
Oof!
Thank you. Uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Joe, second from Peter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.
All right, Susan, I'll get the next one.
I, I was only kidding. I mean, I'm happy to do it.
You got time for a quick meeting downstairs about landscaping regulations? No? You've been working on, you've been working on this like two years, you got to have them done by now.
Maria is bringing lemonade and cookies.